Okay, time to call it to order this regular meeting of Cranbrook City Council. And could I have a motion to recess into the primary committee? That was already, Councilor Smith, all those in favor? And so we are going into our primary committee meeting. First item is the adoption of the agenda for the primary committee. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda this evening? Council Wyers, Councilor Smith, all those in favor? The first item of business is the corporate officers' report on employee policies. What we're looking at here is that we recommend, the primary committee recommends to council that the employee conduct rules and regulations policy be identified as policy number 601 be adopted as attached. I just want to say tonight too that Lynn has been telling us all her secrets of things that she didn't tell us before. One of the things she told us is that she knows whenever we read our stuff and when we don't read it. So those of you that think you're getting away with not doing your homework, you're caught. So this is a policy number 601 and we're being asked to adopt as attached. Congress's authority, Councilor Smith. Discussion, how many read it? Okay, and it does, it goes into the detail of what basic expectations are for our employees in all kinds of common sense situations, but really common basic practices that we expect and the performance that we expect. Ready for the vote? All those in favor? Both carry. The next item of business is general government, governance, finance policies. This is to do with the bank signing authorities. We've had a number of changes here, including the fact that we don't have a post office box anymore, but basically it reestablishes signing authorities that are number 801, policy number 801, and is in basically in the direction of the responsible good governance on finance. A motion to adopt? Councilor Smith, Councilor... What's his name? Councilor Krog. Discussion. How could I forget? Discussion. All those in favor? Both carry. And we are down to question period from the public. Anyone in the gallery wishing to come forward with any question on this matter or other matters? Want to finish back on their old business? Sure. Okay, so we were asked last council meeting for some information on a particular stop sign and we have our... What's the manager of operations? All right. Getting my name right here.
M O O.
Mr. Wright.
Thank you, your worship and councilors. I guess the question came up of why the stop signs that were there. And on advisement typically what we do is first traffic close to traffic engineering and then we'll bring advisements from those professionals into council and move forward. What transpired with this one was I've been receiving ever since I started complaints upon that intersection from my coordinated roles and sidewalks. And also complaints from the neighborhood as well as concerns from the arse and the about the perceived drag strip that was created between the grocery store all the way down to the sea park. And that we thought we would install the three day stop there and alert people to the new management. To this and also the fact that the opening of the Silver Cow with the many more feet road that we were going to have in traffic there, it was felt prudent to go ahead with the stop sign at that time. And to date, I have received one complaint on that and they have been there for about a month and a half. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for following up on that question. Council, do you have any questions on this? Councilor Smith?
Yeah, I've had a number of complaints myself. I haven't suggested they forward them on. And I just wondered if where the gables and the chicken strips are, if that isn't a better place for the four way stop because the road actually doesn't go all the way through.
We're trying to drop that term. But yeah, whether or not that should go all the way through or not have to stop there.
No, the stop sign shouldn't be there instead of the Silver Cow Village because that's where the kids are. That's where the, because that's where people go live in the gables up to high school, the path right through there. If a four way stop sign would be a better place, a driving reception.
Councilor Shagan, do you have any comment on that? I do know the area well. I suppose it's not a bad suggestion. I'm not 100% sure how that would affect the Silver Cow Village. I was going to suggest that if we're going to put where there already is a stop sign, Cypress, there then we also want to play maybe a stop sign further down that same road by the lake park because there still is a lot of people speeding through that area where the kids play baseball.
So a couple of suggestions, but in the meantime, we've made that change there and I think we should monitor it for a period of time. If there are other complaints and things that come forward, do we bring it back and ask for it to be revisited? Would that be...
Yeah.
Okay, Councilor Smith? Give it a shot as is, that is the change that's just been made three months ago?
Put them up to me after two months.
Okay, so we'll monitor that? It's okay? Thank you. All right, end up back to anyone from the gallery wishing to come forward with comments or questions?
Let's jump to him. I'm curious if you've gotten feedback on your new, the new, I guess not just yours, regional districts' waste reclamation or ordering of...
Green bin?
Green bins, yeah.
Kitchen waste.
I'm just curious what the feedback?
My personal feedback has been mixed, but the main complaint that I've heard is people complaining that they've had interference with it putting it out the night before. And so my question to them is why are you putting it out overnight? The night before you didn't do that with your garbage. But mostly positive from people. I don't know whether councilors do that.
Yeah, I spoke with Tim Doitt at length about it and he said that, you know, it was integral in getting the bins out and talking to people and explaining the program. And he only had about 15 people that were, that had set against it concerning 1,500 households. That's pretty good. I think that's a pretty good start.
Yeah, we have to expect some negative feedback. Councilor Shagan?
Thank you. I just want to be honest with you. Does this area, do you have that same system? Do you have it at your place?
No. This has just extended to the city boundaries that first tested Valmar and now this takes in the rest of the city.
I was talking to Maria La Croix at the stewardship of Christine Lake there in the office and asking whether they have it there and she said, no, no. Bears would like, but I'm just curious as to how the bears have been reacting to this. Have you had any feedback on whether any bears have been cracking these things open?
Just the one comment that's been knocked over but not broken into, Councilor Kendall? And then I'll ask if there's complaints that can be addressed.
I actually had two people approach me that they had issues with bears and actually destroy containers or certainly got them over. So that was a concern and I did have one constituent approach me about their perception of the, they felt they were getting less service for more money now. And I did give Tim Doitt the call and had him contact that person directly and explain the entire program. I believe that that issue has been resolved.
Everybody's on the job. And can I ask city staff, is there any complaints that you had to address on the green bin program?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not... Mr. Mayor, thank you. We haven't had any complaints at the, at City Hall, but apparently the one through operations where a bear basically attacked the can to try to get into it, but we've only had one complaint.
Thank you. And Councilor Krog, who's next?
Yeah, I've had a couple and it's bear related. We did get it open, but then other people have said that the locking mechanism is hard to operate, but then we kind of figured that's because they're hungry. So I'm not sure if it wasn't quite locked when the bear got through or whatever.
I've noticed the heavy duty plastic fails they have on side of the building or something. They have a metal ban strap and cable locks and everything else. Somebody, just one quick question. If a bear destroys your green bin, I know what the prices of the small ones are, some will be tired of it, but if a bear destroys your green bin, it's up to you to replace it definitely.
Good question. Can I get back to you on that?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. But the typical process would be that the deal would be covered through the program.
Oh, through the program. Great. I did want to assume that. Councilor Smith?
I just wanted to note that whatever you're putting in a green bin, you've been putting in your other bin anyway. I heard one instance where a bear went for the green bin, was unsuccessful in opening it and tore apart the other garbage. And he just ripped the heck out of it to have, so.
Bears behaving that. Councilor Shagan?
Just one last point of information. I'm not sure if you want to go there, but I don't know if it's known, but the city casual has a bylaw including people who play their garbage on the back of the floor.
So that's the morning of?
That's the morning of to the bear problem.
Well, it's certainly good practice. I don't know whether we want to make more rules or not, but we'll be talking about that at the next Regional District Environment meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, having nothing coming forward, motion to adjourn. Return to primary meeting and we are in a regular council meeting. And the first item of business is to adopt the regular meeting agenda for October the 22nd. Motion, Councilor Doherty, Councilor Kendall, all those in favor? And we have two sets of minutes, October the 9th, special meeting minutes, motion to adopt, Councilor Smith, Councilor Krog, all those in favor? And October 9th, regular meeting minutes, motion to adopt, Councilor Shagan, Councilor Kendall, all those in favor? We have no delegations. We have an opportunity for members of council to make their personal reports and or questions, starting with Councilor Smith.
Sure. Thank you, your worship. On the 9th of this month, I attended the regular Phoenix Foundation meeting. We talked about the upcoming social for the 8th of November, so plans are well in place and we're just getting out that that is going to indeed happen. Just confirming that here. That's the 8th, yes, at 6:30 at the Art Gallery. On the 11th, along with Sarah Winton as the Chair of Commerce, Go2Person, we met with several members of downtown businesses to talk about issues that have been plaguing the downtown in their opinion and do sort of garner some ideas of what they feel can be done to lighten things up a bit. So we're going to have another meeting on Wednesday morning to go over that, to see what next steps that we can make and whether or not they want to look at forming a Business Improvement Association or just a more informal merchants association and start drafting up sort of a wish list on what they would like to see as far as what they can do or how the city might be able to support. So I'll be at that meeting on Wednesday. On the 15th, I was along with Councilor Wyers and yourself, we attended the practice meeting with Minister Yamamoto for the Inland Omega. And it was a great conversation that we had, talking about, you know, what issues rural communities are having and how we might look forward in making things better for us. On the 16th, we had the deer committee meeting. It's yourself, of course. It was small, but it was engaging. Yeah, I'm looking forward to the bigger group getting together to discuss, you know, again, the potential involvement of the Aboriginal group in discussion of how to manage our, our deer population problem. And then on the 19th, along with Councilor Wyers and our financial officer, Roxanne, was in Cranbrook for the taxation seminar called Richer or Poorer, which was to talk about our current model of taxation and sort of the problems municipal, local governments are faced with in trying to pay for their infrastructure. I went in there thinking it was going to be one thing and was really pleased that the hard work that Council Wyers as a member of the executive of AKBLG, how they put it together, it was a real workshop. And at the end of the day, came up with a resolution that we're going to take forward, where the AKBLG is going to take forward. And I'll leave further discussion to Councilor Wyers. And that is it.
Thank you very much. Councilor Krog?
Oh, there we go. You just got to press it three times. So I had the privilege of participating in the community literacy fundraiser along with a couple of other councilors, I think, Council Kendall and Wyers and other people, I'm not sure. Okay. And we raised, I think it was a fair amount of money, I think it was over $700 in conjunction with the water group and other volunteers and in partnership, I guess, with the staff. So that was really good. We got a lot of schedules about community literacy programs, that type of thing. On the 16th of October, I attended the director's meeting for Gallery Two and I know that they sent the semi-annual report to the city and was wondering if anybody had any questions on that. Just a couple of highlights of that was from April to the end of September, they logged in 12,200 visitors to the gallery, which is up. I think they had 1,100 last year during the same time period, so it's up quite a bit. And the visitors information at a little over 7,300 visits. So I thought that was pretty good. So if there's any questions on there, we're going to order the financial report.
So that is under the information section too, where we're going to be asked to accept it and refer it to the budget process. So there's another chance there, council, to ask questions on it?
And that's it.
That's it? Thank you very much. Councilor Kendall?
Thank you, your worship. On October 10th, I also, along with Council Krog and some other councilors, took part in the community literacy campaign, which was very successful. On October the 17th, I attended Small Scale Food Processing Association Workshop. It was very interesting. There's many new ideas with small scale food processing, marketing techniques, new and improved marketing techniques over the internet with smart devices. And it was very well attended by many local producers, so it was really great to see. For continuing to, to the grounding initiative, there's a press release that will be in this week's paper. There'll be posters around town, which will give people the opportunity to pick up survey sheets to, and we value everyone's input. We encourage everyone to get involved, put your ideas forward, fill out the survey sheets. They're available online at the CIBC at the Credit Union and at City Hall. And they shall be returned to City Hall, the paper ones. So again, we encourage everyone to get involved because it's, I believe, a worthwhile endeavor for the entire city.
Thank you very much. Councilor Wyers?
Thank you, your worship. I'll start mine, report this evening with the REACH READER campaign that we all participated in on October 10th. And Ashi Adobi, the coordinator for the Columbia Alliance for Literacy, advised that this is one arm of the ECT that we can access. And the funds that were raised that day were $780 for the community, so well done. On October the 12th, I attended the Calgary Watership Management Plan Public Session in Rock Creek along with Councilors Smith and your worship, organized by the regional district's arm of areas, Sea Director Race and Breaker and Area E Director Hidden Bears and the partnership coordinator in Rock. Now, our MLH, John Sawyer, made a brief appearance to give the attendees, and that would be on the B C Water Modernization Act. Does everybody remember the B C Water Modernization Act of 2010?
Yes, we, our MLH was actually chairing that.
Yes, yes. So we haven't heard since then what had happened with it. He did give us an update. MOE is currently doing the draft legislation on the act. He spoke to the MOE minister last month and John's position is now he will be present for this draft based on province-wide input through the process that was initiated in 2010. So there was a lot, there was an opportunity through a blog on the provincial government's website, the communities to submit their ideas and concerns. This will go to the stakeholders, First Nations, local governments, et cetera, to see how it will affect them, the draft that is developed. This includes legislation for groundwater that doesn't exist today. A major gap was the limited riparian protection and issues. This issue was brought to the surface through the public process and will appear in the new draft. On October the 15th, I attended the Boundary Country Regional Chamber Promise Breakfast with the Minister of State for Small Business, Honorable Naomi Yamamoto. And interesting to note that some recommendations came from the members who did attend that will caught, actually quite intrigued the minister and we look forward to hearing back through response. So let me come back to the Regional Chamber Promise. Back to, I just wanted to report just also, I just had a notation here, the afternoon session that we did have at the Rock Creek, that's Kettle River Watership Management Plan, covering surface water, water quality. The session was well attended and the guest speakers provided excellent insight into the work that's being done in the Okanagan Valley for watershed management. On October the 17th, I attended the regular monthly board meeting for the Cranbrokes District Library. Two more school tours had come through the library. As you note, the libraries are no longer available in the schools, they've been taken out. So they have received requests from school teachers to bring their students to the library to see how their students can access the resources because they're quite, they've made their students fully aware that the internet can't be totally relied upon for information. So they're strongly, all those students are getting, have received new library membership cards. The Christina Lake Outreach has reached its first year and the stats for the Christina Lake visitors year to date was 890. They have, they're out there every Wednesday, they have a staff member from the library who has a library station open from 10 to 4. October library book sale is coming up, October 25th, 26th, and 27th. And there is an excellent inventory of books that will be available at the library by donation. Circulations so far year to date for the library have been 71,756. And this circulation includes loans, which is taking out the books, renewals of entire shoes. The draft 2013 budget was submitted to, which will be submitted to the funding stakeholders because it was approved. And the October, the provincial government collects stats that are published online annually and base their funding to provincial libraries on the stat collection process. So there are stat figures available. I do have them in print, if anybody is interested, and I'm sure they show up in our weekly information package from the library. October the 19th, I traveled to Cranbroke for the AKBLG session for Richer Report, Building the Case for Taxation Tools. And as Councilor Smith alluded, we, it was a very interesting session. The provincial election is looming in spring of 2013. Timing is critical to rally local governments' appetite around the province to establish a campaign strategy to achieve a fairer and long-term funding formula that recognized the true cost of jointly delivering services with the feds and the province for infrastructure and programs. I think it's important to note that there's been no change in the transfer payments that come down to the local governments, to the taxation system. We see the federal government has, takes 50% of the pie, provincial government takes 42%, and we have 8%. But as we all know, we're all seeing considerable downloading to local governments. I can give you a perfect example in our community. Why is Cranbrokes putting $35,000 in their budget to manage deer or have a deer committee? When the provincial government is responsible for wildlife, it's time that we join forces in this province. And I think it was critical to note that they spoke highly of the mayor's caucus that you attended, your worship, in May of this year. And full support right behind the recommendations that came from your three-day meeting as well. So a press release was released to the media today and it's entitled, "Cootney and Boundary Local Governments Think It's Broken." I strongly recommend that you read the press release. It has gone to all media. I have been advised that in the past, the media have not been that responsive to AKBLG press releases or information from AKBLG. So I'm certain that they'll want to have a look at this because we have to start looking and realizing that we need more money to run our local governments. And it isn't fairly coming down the pipeline, just as you recognized with the mayor's conference. I do want to, they endorsed the following statement at the meeting on Friday. The Association of Cootney and Boundary Local Governments recommends a replacement of ad hoc grant funding. The grants that pitch communities one against the other, where there's winners and there's losers. Where how much does it cost to put together the, just writing the application and the, especially with structural, you have engineering and technical information that has to be compiled. It's a great deal of work and it's a great deal of expense for... It's a great deal of work and it's a great deal of expense for a local government. And you don't know if you're going to win. So the, this, the statement that we have put together, this means your local government will maintain its infrastructure and continue to deliver needed services on a daily basis. Sufficient predictable funding will ensure each local government can fund their different needs. And all elected officials will be able to plan and budget according to established needs and priorities through collaboration with our other government agencies and levels of government. It's time that we realize that pitching ourselves against each other for grants is an old, old outdated method. And we need a fair distribution of funds for the future. And that's my report for this evening.
Thank you, Counselor. I would certainly like to echo some of what Counselor Wyatt said about the mayor's caucus. And we looked specifically at a couple of grants where the cost was 50/50, shared with the province. But in fact, the municipality ended up picking up 70% of it because of mounting the project, all of the expenses related to it. So it is an archaic system. They ask us to plan five years ahead, but they don't plan six months ahead, and that's the frustrating part of it.
And another point was, they, with these grants, you'll notice that most of the time, you're taking something that isn't a priority in your, in your budget of the five-year plan. Could be an upgrade to a soccer field, that is a low priority. But all of a sudden now gets pushed to the top and your infrastructure that you need to work on gets moved down again.
Yeah, it's not the kind of meeting I expected it to be either. I thought it was going to be totally different than that, so I'd certainly like to hear more about what was discussed. It sounds like it was highly politicized.
You know, people are in a lot more.
Yes, okay. That's it?
Yes.
Counselor O'Doherty.
Yes, Your Worship, I got a small report. I have the best dog on the city council, Your Worship. The parks and the campyards are closed till the spring, no air.
Yeah? Did we break even this year?
Well, I didn't say that, yes. And work on Donaldson Park in the field is done right now.
I see that.
And they're doing a great job, and thanks to Al and the staff. And the hockey season is on its way down. And my, the board of the minor hockey figure skating and curling, all, they're all open now for the primary, full spring. Except for our hockey team, where we're having a rough time right now.
Oh yeah, but you got a new compressor, so the ice will be great.
And a new machine to do the.
A new Zambro.
Yes, yeah. So everything looks pretty good now. So, and I was looking at other council raising money, and you were ready for the board to do it in the early committee. And that's my report, Your Worship.
Thank you very much. Counselor Rishagin.
Thank you, Mr. Wyatt, I have a couple things here. The first one, I'm hoping that one of those individuals that attends a workshop, that's her. I heard some type of, I don't know if it's true, and hopefully you could just, like, I was told that eight cents of every tax dollar collected in this country is returned to municipalities, only eight cents, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's remarkable, yeah.
And not only that, it's based on property taxes. But that's our only mechanism for giving revenue for the city, and it has in no way tied to the economy. So that disconnect makes it very hard for local governments to deal with their budgets.
That's interesting. The second thing I wanted to mention, I ran into Ray Hanson from Habitat for Humanity this afternoon, and he asked if I would be interested in being able to talk between city council and Habitat. And I said to him that I would have interest, but I should run by his council, so I was asking Mr. Wyatt if I would be.
I would be pleased to see your involvement there, this Habitat. The previous connection there was Chris Moslin. But yes, if you'd like to take that on, I'd like to endorse that.
Okay, well, thank you. Secondly, I would, as apparently we don't have a policy to deal with it. During the UBCM, those who attended, we received a course pamphlet for Dalhousie University to do with municipal courses. I sent each of you an email, so without going into it, all that deeply here. I would ask permission from council, being that it's a course, not a seminar or a conference, which our policy allows that staff act on, to allow me to attend or to take two courses in the spring.
So you're making that as a motion?
I am making that as my request.
For the council to approve that, and what would the cost of that be?
I don't have an email to send here. The cost would be $1,690.
And it's an internet course, so there isn't travel and accommodation involved?
No travel, no accommodation, it's all. And the two courses, for the record, we municipal law, I can't speak today, and community and civic engagement.
Counsel, even though we've discussed redrafting some of these rules and tightening them up, Counselor Rishagin has asked if you consider at this point allowing him to attend this course in the spring of this coming year. So we would be budgeting for it. Need a second here for that?
Oh, a second here for this.
Counselor Smith.
Yeah, and the reason I'm.
Speaking to it.
Yes, and the reason I'm asking now as opposed to waiting until budget time to speak to it is the fact that, as we can see on that sheet I was giving to the UBCM, that it did close on 20th of August. And potentially, I'm kind of playing with fire. I have called them as recently as this past Friday to make sure there was still room. And there is room, there are two spots left, and I still want to miss the board. Also, I spoke to our CEO over the phone, and he said there will be funds available and we should be able to cover the expenses.
Well, in fact, we would make that decision to make funds available.
Oh yeah, well, yes, yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, is there a price point that you're aware of, more than one? Say, two or four people know that history is.
It would be the same question. Given our welcome, by final means, I welcome anybody else who would be interested.
Well, I certainly expressed interest to worship, my, my, I think.
Yes, you did, yeah. Okay. Did you, Counselor Kendall?
I certainly don't have any issue with anyone taking the courses and improving their knowledge base in any way. If I have a concern is that until we actually have a policy in place for this type of thing, that we would in effect be setting a precedent by improving something at this meeting. And that would be, once the precedent's been set, it would be difficult to go back and change a policy after that. At least that is my concern. Thank you, other councilors.
Maybe before I get to Counselor Smith again, any comments from other counselors? Counselor Crowe, Counselor Wyatt, Counselor Crawford, Counselor Crowe?
The, it's an internet course, but the location of Dalhousie University, Halifax, is in Halifax. And my question, obviously, the interaction with the community course, I think is an awesome asset. I wasn't sure about that municipal law course because it's Halifax, I thought it was Ottawa. But it's Halifax, and we're in British Columbia, and our municipal laws are unique to us. So what benefit there would be from that?
So I was suggesting that you would support the one course, but not the law one.
I would, I guess, need more information on the law course, I would definitely support the one course. And then again, concerns that Counselor Kendall already has a precedent, but.
Counselor Rishagin, are you interested in modifying the request to the one course?
I don't know. In regards to Counselor Kendall's concerns there, you understand, but like I said, with time crunch, the way they're, because I asked them in regards to, they offer courses every four months, is what they do. But they don't offer the same courses during that same period every year. So this spring, they're not going to be offering the same course on the next spring. They go every second year. So the next time these two courses will be offered will be two years from now. So it's not like I could put it off until January, thinking like taking the fall of next year or the spring. It's going to be two years beyond that. Secondly, in terms of Counselor Crow's concerns, from what I understand, is the course itself standardized? I've looked at these courses through campus and college, as well as Catholic and college. However, they're six-day course, and they're all in-house, and it's the same material as usual. Okay, so I'm not 100% sure how they do it, but it's standardized across Canada, a course. This is just what happens to be the cheapest method that they deliver.
Counselor Smith.
Just to address Counselor Kendall's terminal precedent. If, in fact, we are looking to draft a policy that basically speaks the same language that we're talking here, you know, supporting people going to courses, then it's not really a precedent. The following policy will be basically allowing that to happen.
Yeah, you're saying it would allow this kind of situation, so council couldn't make an exception or make a decision?
Right, if we're moving.
The amount of availability of funds. Counselor Rishagin.
Just to follow that up, just in regards to precedence setting, I would just like to say that regardless of whether or not we allow courses in next policy, like I've before counsel, there will always be that ability for exceptions. Even if we say course not allowed, it will not preclude somebody from this council in the future to come and ask regardless of what the policy says, right? No different than right now, we have a policy that says nothing about courses. But if we still have the ability to come forward, and as I've done, I can ask.
Okay, for the comments, seeing none. So the question is on the floor, I'm positive. Do you support Counselor Rishagin taking these two courses? All those in favor? Kerry.
Okay, and well, thank you. The third, or fourth, whatever the case may be, item I have is, as you've mentioned, my intention, the Greyhound Canada will be reducing once again in the service runs, reduction for us from 10 to 7. Not allowing the two runs on the week on Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And I was under the assumption, the deadline to submit comments was the 17th of October. Apparently, it's the 24th of October. I know the town of Osuia sent a letter of displeasure to them, but they rushed through it being that it was the 17th. And I'd like to make a motion stating my displeasure with reduction in service by Greyhound Canada, to hopefully make it in time for a comment here.
Second, Counselor Smith. You know, we did write a letter previously when there were discussions of the reduction in service. So would be our first, of course, bond in some of this matter to Counselor Rishagin and Counselor Smith.
Yeah, we wrote that letter when they reduced, I believe, from 14 to 10. I fell on down here since then, but I still think it's worth it to write it now. A lot of people rely on that for medical appointments, for recreation, for traveling. There's a lot of different reasons, and it affects people's lives, pay their bottom line. But we have to look at the need and the ability for people to access services in a town that's remote enough. And I wholeheartedly support us writing a letter to the state.
Counselor Smith.
I'm just wondering if, quickly communicate with a few other communities to see if they're on board with the same idea so that they get a letter all along the route.
Counselor Kendall.
I believe I did read some person that somewhere that stated that the BLG has sent a letter, which I guess we could voice as a city opinion, but I believe that they've presented a regional case to Greyhound.
So you're saying maybe it's not necessarily, we're already speaking as a collective in the AKBLG?
So if you would, yes, but I think if the city wanted to send a letter.
Supporting the motion anyway. Counselor Crowe.
Yeah, I think numerous letters on the internet there for the head of the city, AKBLG, they go on, because.
Right.
But if Greenwood, if we contact.
Is a nod around the table.
I would ask that we send that copy to the AKBLG, showing support.
Yeah. Okay, so a letter basically showing our concern for the reduction in service and copying the AKBLG, Counselor Rishagin.
And I would ask, just to follow up on Counselor Crow's there, for us to contact other municipalities. I don't know if Osuia's, if it was in their local newspaper. But Greenwood, they don't have, some of those municipalities don't have councils of any sort. But it's like how do you get somebody within the community to write that letter to show strength in numbers? That's wrong, that's, I think, beneficial.
Pretty good motion, all those in favor? Both, Kerry, Counselor Rishagin.
And last, but not least, I would like to congratulate, we're going to be termite for last meeting, and wish you all the best in the future.
Okay, I have a couple of items that usually I have just the leftovers. I was really pleased to see in the water study meeting in Rock Creek that we had a number of US representatives from the American side of the border who are equally concerned with the same issues that we are. So this is really drawing in our American cousins to the South and very positive development in their participation. I'm combining my report here with the regional report, so I'll ask here for your approval of it in one motion. The air transfer to the trail hospital helicopter pad requires a helicopter with two motors. Keeping it in mind that because of the population density in the trail area, that single-engine helicopters are not flying into that airport. So I'm watching what impact that would have on us in our helicopter landing pad. The Greenbans, we beat those up perfectly, we're slaver.
Slaver.
The D.C., the Boundary Economic Development Group have basically decided that they will continue on even as Area C, Christina Lake, is removed for reasons of Christina Lake and their services. That we will be continuing on, and we had a successful meeting with representatives of council. Basically, we're not looking for a motion on this matter. It was a question of whether or not our Boundary Economic Development Group would be working in sync with the Economic Development Commission. And I think we have that commitment from both groups for this coming year. So it's just a one-year commitment that we're looking at again, with a thought to evolving as the future changes within the boundary. And the deer committee, two items on the deer committee that need follow-up on. The East Cutneys are doing a Living with Deer workshop. And I'm thinking that we will probably bring that in as a resource to Grand Forks. The other thing is, the Grand Forks Deer Committee has asked me to write a letter formally to Area D and ask the participation of Area D in the deer committee in a formal way to sit at the table. And the rationale for that is clear, I think, the impact around the region in farming areas and various other areas surrounding the city are as dramatic as some of the things that are happening in town here with deer. And so I'm not sure on the protocol for that, but I'm thinking that that letter should come from Grand Fork City since it's our deer committee. And so not just a letter from the deer committee, but a letter from this Grand Fork City Council. And so could I have said as a motion, Counselor Rishagin? Second, Counselor Smith. So this would go on letterhead, and we'll word it in a way that is basically encouraging Area D to recognize that responsibility on being part of the committee. We already have Area D representatives who live in Area D, but we have not had an official relationship with Area D on this committee, which we definitely need to share. So all those in favor? Both, Kerry. And that pretty much wraps it up. So I would make a motion to accept my report and all the council reports. You're looking at the regional district, Counselor O'Doherty, Counselor Smith, all those in favor?
Hi, Mr. Wyatt.
Yes, Counselor Rishagin.
Just a question to further discuss the deer situation. I was reading on the boundary signal here in regards to the deer committee and the Boundary All Nations, that regional council. I've heard nothing of this. Could you go further into detail of what exactly this whole arrangement is? Is it pie-nas pie, is it real, is it, what exactly? I've heard nothing, I've been asked by citizens.
Yes.
But I can't answer any questions.
Well, there was a suggestion made by the committee that we contact the Osuia's Indian Band to see whether there was some interest from Chief Louie and the Indian Band in Osuia in working with open organ and boundary communities. And that would include Pentic and Osuia's various communities are having different difficulties. That discussion only happened in a very peripheral way. And in the meantime, the word got out here that we would be interested in working with native groups. And so this native group came forward, Bannick, and basically said, would you be interested in us pinching you on some ideas for how we might work? in us pinching you on some ideas for how we might work with you and deal with the problem? So that was as far as we got on it at this point. We're waiting for a formal letter from them and a proposal from them that we would then be able to review first at the Deer Committee, and then you can be sure if it'll be moving forward in terms of this council. The concept of involving the natives had two rationales to it. One, that they may have more ability to deal with the disposition of the meat, that they might be able to make better use of the whole animal and respect for the whole animal, the hooves, hides, all of that material from the deer. And secondly, that there would be greater community acceptance for a native group doing the harvest and for the rest of us who are not native. So on those two points, we've invited them to present something to the next meeting of the Deer Committee, Counselor Smith?
And Bannick stands for Boundary All Nations, Aboriginal Council.
Thank you, I'd forgotten the anachronisms.
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
I think it's a positive move coming forward, a very preliminary stage. Okay. Okay, we have recommendations from staff. The first item is the Boundary Hospital Helport, and we're just advising Transport Canada to support for the Boundary Hospital at this point. It's a formalized question to us, support it's not details of our relationship with our anything, but that we need a little support. And I have a motion to make such a letter, Transport Canada, Counselor Wires, Counselor Smith, discussion?
Counselor Kendall? Could the heliport affect the other area ambulance services? Or is it just be another level of service or discontinuing?
No, the thing's wing is still going to be necessary. The ambulance service is so limited by a number of factors, by weather conditions, time of day, they don't like to fly at night, there's a number of things limiting the ability of the helicopter to meet a patient's needs, so no, we're confident. Further? So the motion's on the table. All those in favor? Both, Carrie. And the next item, I'm going to ask council to allow us to have the developer in this situation. This is a development permit from Brown Ridge Ventures, they are here this evening, and I would invite them to comment and to answer questions if council is okay with that. Are you in motion first? I do, to break the roles that we have, Counselor Doherty, Counselor Smith, that we allow participation at Brown Ridge Ventures in this discussion this evening. So yes, go ahead if you'd like to take an opening comment.
Thank you.
Please, any further questions? Can we hold on that?
No, yes, first.
This person will allow you to speak.
Yeah.
Yes, we do. All those in favor? Thank you. Sorry, Counselor.
Thank you, George, and the sponsors for giving us the opportunity. This is a project that, you know, we bought the old Winnipeg Hotel in July the 4th, and after, you know, kind of good assessment of the building, the building is, it's very old, very rundown, and it's been, it's well beyond repair really, you know, to spend that time and the energy and the money necessary to put that thing back to where it should be would be well beyond the means of most human beings, so we made a decision to, you know, these old buildings, if you look up and down all over, there's many of these old hotels were built in around the same period, most of them are all gone now, they've all lost their time. You can go see, you know, in the house of art, the Marbling Hotels, Coles Down, Beaverdale, they're all over, and this one is in that same kind of arena, so for us, it's the one part of the business that is valuable enough to us is the retail part of the business. So our goal is to build a retail store and, you know, and just, you know, and not utilize the licenses at this time for the pub or the restaurant or the rooms. They just don't think that there's a necessity, your honor, your worship, and me for that, you know. So people, you know, we've heard talk about, you know, the age of the hotel and some of the, you know, some of the, you know, I guess, the emotional attachment to the hotel, you know, we completely understand that, but it's just, let's see, it's just, it's just not economically reasonable for us to try and, you know, do anything with that hotel at this point.
So council, you understand that what we're looking at here is that we still retain control over the building site materials, color, landscaping, design, and the articulation of the east wall. So those are items that are continuing to be outstanding for us and allow us to work with the developer here, although this recommendation from staff tonight is that we approve the building development permit and allow for, I'm assuming that demolition of the building.
Yes.
Counselor Doherty? You're making a motion?
Yes.
And the second are Counselors Smith, so it's on the table for discussion. Any questions for the developer?
Mr. Mayor, just further to that, the developer was requested to provide some further information to council tonight, so the items that were to be dealt with, that were going to be the landscaping component, the articulation of the east wall, and they provided us some materials that were not part of the council agenda, that were going to be provided as part of this information. If we move through the report, I think there's a, move along one more slide, please. Okay, so on the picture there, on the, so the one question here was the articulation of the east wall, I believe this is the east wall. The SCP suggests that we don't have any blank canvases. Again, here is the east wall right here. The developer's proposed, rather than just a blanket canvas there, he's proposed these patterns to break up that wall. The landscaping pieces are identified here as presented and along here. The form and character of the building and the setback, the character of the building is related to the finishes and the overall facade, and then setbacks is the one question. The Ministry of Transportation setback requirement is a minimum of 15 feet. The developer's proposing a 26-foot setback. That may be utilized a lot a little bit more, but what we've, what our SCP suggests is to try to maintain that intimate feel with the highway, but we're really talking about feet, we're not talking about a large concession here. So for council to consider those elements, we're talking about 11 feet, we're talking about the finishes and this piece here, those are the pieces that weren't identified along with the landscaping. So Mr. Mayor, those are the pieces that the developer has provided as part of the report.
Great, thank you. I think it captures a certain Western look, and what we're looking at is to satisfy the sustainability plan where we're asking that buildings add to the overall look of a particular street, and I think they've achieved a certain amount of this in this particular design. Counselor Smith?
Just a little further in that, there you go. That facade was one that we had talked about with a couple of counselors, where the little windows there really added to that kind of Western feel. The previous slide, the front design did not include those windows, so I'm just wanting to make sure that we're talking about the same thing, you know.
Okay, next, the motion is on the floor, some writings of a question. All those in favor? Both. I'm sorry, is that in favor or opposed? Can we do this mode again?
Mr. Mayor, I could provide a little bit more. I think what we need to do is, we need to select these pieces and the developers here to, I think, basically accept this process, but if we go back to the previous slide, if council's in favor of this overall concept here with the finishes, the form and character with the east blanking wall, with that, with those finishes on there, and the overall landscape plan, which would be registered on title as part of the, as part of the DP, you know, if council's in favor of that look, or if council wants to maybe go with a rock finish versus the other picture had a brick finish, and the color, I mean, these are the pieces that we would like to have council speak on tonight. The developer would then give his development permit with those, fill out the resolution. So with that, could the, whether the windows are included or not included, I'm not sure how far it goes. Sure, I think the pieces to that, I mean, I can't speak for the developer, but I think that, you know, with a minor amendment, if council like this option being A1, then that could be, as amended to that, would be to include the windows. I don't know if the developer has any opposition to that, so that would be something that council could make that request.
I think, you know, just if I can speak, your worship, is, you know, our goal is to have something that we're proud of and also the community is proud of, and if you have those windows, those windows do enhance the look of the building, you know, I believe they look, enhance the look of the building, and even on the east wall, you're breaking up that east wall as opposed to one big blank, you know, kind of monotonous scene, that gives us some optical, you know, appearance, and that, that's very pleasing.
Yeah, it gives a kind of a posting being.
Yeah. Counselor Wires?
I do like the river rock.
Yes.
As opposed to a brick.
We had tried to, we put some brick, we put some options up there, but it came back, the river rock was the most appealing, and here, you know, river rock with the, you know, with the river right behind it, it kind of fits in.
That's great, I'd be for that too, your worship.
Counselor Rorschag?
Yeah, just a question of approval here, at some point you're going to be taking out this building, I'm not actually sure if you put that date in here, but if approved, what's your, your timeframe look like, like what's your next steps?
Well, we would like to get, you know, proceed as quick as we can, you know, we've, we made the purchase July the 4th, so, you know, our goal is to get the building, you know, get a new building up as quick as we can so that we're in full operation, both feet firmly planted on the ground, and when next spring comes around.
The reason I ask this, just further, is I'm from Grand Forks, I lived here on my high, I definitely went out to a school. Anyhow, you know, I can say I've been to that bar a few times in my younger years, but I've never been to the upstairs and being that it is quite a old building, is there any possibility, this is me being selfish and having the ability to, you know, allow me to go and at least take a look and, I've never been inside the building.
Absolutely, absolutely, it's been a week to make those arrangements for you. It has, we've allowed people to come in and, you know, a lot of the material in there, like the, you know, the equipment and the kitchen and that, you know, we've had, asked somebody to come in and take it out, and they've taken it to auctions so that they can, you know.
So you're attempting to recycle as much as possible.
Yes, we are, yes, we are. Our goal was to get as many people, you know, and the two choices we had were, you know, just to put it all in a big, you know, in the dumpster, take the dump, or to, you know, to make as much use of the materials we could. Is there anything in there, all the kitchen equipment, everything like that?
Counselor Smith?
I think you had mentioned the possibility of salvaging some of the, you know, maybe wood flooring or something like that, or some, some of the actual artifacts that may be there in display or auctions.
We did, we went through tonight, and we went through with a contractor tonight to do an evaluation and to see if we can, you know, if there is, you know, an opportunity, and I mean, if we can and if it's feasible and it makes sense, we most certainly will.
Yes, it's got to make economic sense.
Yes.
Counselor Wires?
Well, Mr. Irvin, thank you for coming this evening, and if you should find anything interesting with demolition crew, we'd be really excited to see what that is and maybe pass it on to our artifacts at the Boundary Museum Society, or, just so you know, we do have the archival system here at City Hall.
Excellent.
And the Boundary Museum Society.
We do, your worship, we do have one or two pictures in there that probably one of the original pictures, where there's some, I guess the train station was right next door, and is the picture of some of the, I guess, the welcoming party and the balconies when the train's coming, so we do have that, and we've, you know, that's something that we could make copies of and, you know, and furnish those to certain, you know, to whoever we get.
Okay, and thank you for allowing our staff to help shape this so that it does meet the sustainability requirements. Council, you have a motion in front of you to approve the development permit? All those in favor? Both, Carrie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, worship, I'd just like to thank the staff and the council members, and especially for being so cooperative, but I think us to put this together.
That's us, we're cooperative.
Thank you.
Okay. Information summary items. Counsel, can I have a motion to accept our decisions as recommended? Some, Counselor Doherty, Mr. Crog, all those. Okay, first item is the Galloway Two Semiannual Report in accordance with their lease and funding agreement. As you can see, they are asking us to consider in the budget process the return to the funding level of $150, this will be referred to the budgeting process. Counselor Rorschag asked if there were other questions related to this tonight, and you have the report from them, if anybody wants to bring any of the items forward for discussion at all? If not, research reports? You know, we need to read it.
I had it.
It was him.
Oh, it was Counselor Crog, yeah, I'm sorry. You know, that's, okay. Yes, Counselor Crog, sorry, did you want to highlight it any further?
No, just if anybody had any questions. Good afternoon.
Counselor Kendall?
What was, what's the, for, for, currently, they're asking to return to the regional date?
Thirty, thirty. Okay, second item B is correspondents from the RCP expressing, thanks to the Grand Forks City for the participation in the crisis, the crisis at the Credit Union in terms of the potential bomb scare, and so they were really pleased at how quickly the city staff came forward with support for that, that was the incident. Correspondents from Nadine Nabachinov suggesting that we drill more wells and being opposed to water meters, receive information. Hello pledge, very interesting. Counselor Wires, have anything to say on this? It sounds like a really interesting community pledge to say hello to people and just make it a friendlier town, so I'm saying we should buy into that.
Hello.
Good start. The travel guide book, counsel to receive this information, it looks very promising, but again, you know, full pages, four grand or so, and we committed ourselves to the Kennel Valley Express and the visitor's choice right now, so I'm assuming at this point that you would pursue a further package at this point until next session. And we have minutes from the Environment Committee, minutes from the Deer Committee, and the October 9th task list. Any further questions? All those in favor? Both, Carrie. So that brings us to questions from the media. Carl, you're calling.
Just to inform you, what I just did with Counselor Rorschagin here was show them the live stream. You guys have been live for, for an hour now.
You see it up there?
No, you can't see it up there. Somebody has to put it up on that.
How did you do that?
You can see it here on my.
And so, he's participating, actually. Google Mix is available, they're trying to compete with Facebook, this thing called Hangouts, and you can stream video live to the Hangout. You can have other people participate. So, on the stream that he's looking at there, there's two little windows below, one is the camera out there, and the other one is his webcam over here, because he's been in it as well the whole, week and a half. And somewhere along the way, I said, well, I can invent this on a page. So, you've had one viewer the whole time, and that's Ray, she's, well, she's poking up, watching. There are some technical issues, but yeah.
So, this is an exciting development, that we might be able to go live to our community again here? Is that what happened here?
As long as they have web access.
Yeah, so the community would have to be on.
Online.
Internet connection.
Just thought I'd let you know that.
Okay, be interesting to know how many people are online, what would our audience be, but I certainly welcome that. I think that we all behave better when we're on camera.
And it becomes a YouTube video afterwards, so you can get metrics on how many watch live, how many watch the content, something like that. Yeah, I was trying to get my team. What's up? Yeah, just go to the government's mini-wide, and go down the page a little bit, get the play out in the little box.
Okay. Excellent. Right, how about it? Councilor Smith?
I suggested that last, also talk to our CEO, that can connect him with our IT, to work out if there's any other issues that have to be considered.
There's, there's any monetary cost in this one?
No, actually, Google Mix is always available for free. And if the city had its own Gmail account and YouTube account, you and he could be the host of this thing, and all of you guys here could be participants, and it would be just like a, a, a go-to meeting type thing, where you have multiple people being involved, and when they start talking, their key webcam becomes the major picture.
Yeah.
I guess the only person that would be having a problem would be Counselor Doherty.
Yeah. I just wanted to, 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 to.
I don't know if we ever did it when we stopped or not. We could check that out as the explorers at this class, see whether we need a motion to do that or not. Interesting question. Mr. Ronigan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first question is about dust control.
Yes.
I'm asking it because I promised someone who stopped me on the street, who drives into the city every morning, was questioning dust control and specific abrasives. I understand that indoor floor and rocks will have to control and equipment to control the dust in their yards. What about specific abrasives?
As their plan? Yeah, I, we did meet recently with specific abrasives, and I don't believe that dust was discussed as an issue. We, I, I don't recall any complaints about dust. Have, have we experienced complaints about dust from Rockcel's site at the pit?
Specific breaks.
Oh, what did I say? Rockcell? Specific abrasives, sorry. Getting hurried.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have that information for me, but it's not something that I've been aware of since I've been here with any dust control.
I mean, there has been a chronic dust problem on Riverside Drive for many, many years, but that appears to me to be from the pile, not from the activities of mining. Councilor Smith?
I think, and I just wrote by the, the plant itself, where they actually do the grinding and separating all that.
You mean the one on Carson?
On Carson, and, and that's really where all the dust is coming from. And there doesn't appear to be any sort of mitigation equipment or something to.
Well, their mitigation areas, they wet it. So, the people who live across the road have had a, a problem for, since that site was set up there, with dust drifting across from that site.
Do they just?
That's regional district. So, Roy, or Mr. Ronigan, what, what would you like us to do with this map? Do you think it's worth looking at?
The, the person had pictures that had been taken as she came down the road of that situation up there, and said, is there anything that can be done about it? So, I agree with that question.
Okay, and I, I'm not sure we have a problem there, but maybe that would be the first question I would have, is do we have a problem?
Maybe someone could check and see if there is a problem. And that came out of, the reason that she asked me was because of my column on the nephrometer?
Yes.
And why didn't they test up in that area? And another question, it is city property, and they're, they're working within the city.
Your Rockcel pile, yes.
I'll leave that with you.
Okay, I think we could ask for us to check that out, and Counselor Kendall and Smith?
A suggestion, Your Worship, may be that, since you're a representative to the RDKB, that the next meeting, you could bring that up. And I've driven by that plant myself, and there are plumes of dust coming out of under operating. I realize that it's not in the city boundary, but possibly bring up these concerns to the RDKB.
You're, you're talking about the Carson Road cleaning plan?
Yes.
Okay, and I'll, we'll broach that with the regional district. Councilor Smith?
Well, certainly, the Boundary Area Quality Committee, which is now the Environment Committee, includes their quality concerns. It does open up the jurisdiction, I guess, on that Environment Committee level, so, you know, maybe there's more discussion that can happen there. But I do recall that the map, the route that was taken, they did go past.
The U Carson Road.
And, and also up Riverside Drive, or Granby, Granby Road there, past the landfill. So, I think data would be, like, on a regular basis, both.
Okay, the dust, I think in general, we could take a look at that dust problem in the report.
We are meeting tomorrow.
Thank you. Second question with regard to, going back about a year or so, a library renovation.
Yes.
And it was brought up at a couple of meetings, a couple of meetings ago at the Library Board. What is the situation on that?
We applied for a sustainability grant that, what is it called? What was that grant called? Anyway, we applied for a grant, infrastructure grant, yes. And as to, we have, I'm assuming not heard back on it, but that grant went in several months ago now.
I think that was the G E infrastructure improvement, or like 15?
I think that's it, yeah.
That has to be an existing bill.
Existing bill.
It's going to be new.
So, we, we looked at that and decided, I think, on phase one and phase two of the original plan that was put together for the renovation, that we put washrooms in, that would clean up the basement, put an access to the basement. I don't know how far we got in that, I'd have to look back on the documents. I know that the grant itself couldn't be over a certain dollar figure, and, and so we had to modify our application, but it did go in as our request from the city.
Okay, thank you. The matter of CETA has been discussed around this table. And I don't know where that is going, I mean, federally, whether it's going to be signed or what. But my question is, does the council get information on federal and provincial deals that affect them? For example, if you read what you can find on the China-Cana investment deal, the commentary on that indicates that it will be somewhat similar to CETA, except it's with regard to investments.
So, yes, we do get information from the FCM and from UVCM on those international matters, which comes to us to read and to keep up on it.
Okay, this, this deal with China is just about as scary as CETA, at least from my Finally, with the Deer Committee, and I haven't read the minutes in the report, has there ever been any discussion about habitat restoration?
Yes, there's been a lot of discussion about restoring the habitat surrounding the city, and one of the problems that we're addressing at the committee is that the habitat enhancement would really be undermined severely by the cows in, in the grasslands surrounding Grand Forks. The various areas that you can see visually from around the city are where the habitat should be enhanced for the whitetail deer, but it's also favorite range of a lot of cattle. And so, thoughts to, to do that really hinge on our ability to keep cows out of some of those sensitive areas. It's the only way that we can go, is to, to put the deer back where they belong, in simple terms.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Further, on the floor?
I just wanted to add my observation, a plume rising from processing slag, specific abrasives. I've seen that from highway, off in the distance. First time I saw it, I was, what's going on? What is that? What's out there that can put up stuff like that? And it was that. It's, it's pretty evident when they're working.
Well, I can see a, a plume of, of, of moisture, and it's evident in the winter months more than the summer, because they're washing, and I think it's heated water that they're using to wash it with, so I don't see that.
Well, actually, it's like a brown veil.
Okay, I haven't seen that, I'll defer the, to the committee on the environment.
So, you know.
All right, thank you. And motion to adjourn?